Just looking to see what.
So just to frame the discussion a little bit, I'm going to be talking about an overview of the Beginning with Habitat Program. And then I would say sort of like not a 10,000-foot view, but not down in the weeds, sort of a mid-level view of our tools, our maps, using examples from Winthrop, and relating that to strategies and things that you as a planning board or other kind of entities in town can do with this data. How's this? I'll speak a little bit clearer. Is that better? Okay. So I can take questions during it or at the end, so feel free to interrupt at any time. And away we go. The Beginning with Habitat Program, I'm also doing this without my notes. This is a little bit different setup than I'm used to, so we'll just wing it. And if something's not clear, just jump in and ask me to repeat. The Beginning with Habitat Program is housed at inland fisheries and wildlife. Do this a little bit easier. And so at IFNW, our mission is to study and protect the species that call Maine home, the habitats that they live in, and also provide public access for activities like wildlife viewing, hunting, fishing, recreational activities outdoors. So at the Beginning with Habitat Program, we're a partnership of many other different state agencies, federal agencies, and nonprofit partners to collect natural resources data and share it out for planning purposes to help with that mission of conserving the wildlife and habitats across the state. So I do want to make sure to mention upfront that our program within IFNW is non-regulatory and interacting with our data or the strategies that we suggest is not, it's a voluntary action on the part of the town. So we're a planning branch, and we provide assistance to folks that want to use the data. Beginning with Habitat is a landscape-based approach to achieving conservation on a developing landscape. And we do this by providing the most up-to-date wildlife and plant habitat information for use in processes like comprehensive planning, open space planning, and more. We do this in a variety of ways. See if I can get the cursor to work. So we share kind of written information like best management practices and model ordinances, spatial data in the form of maps, and technical assistance like presentations and workshops like what we're doing tonight. So we go to really anywhere that folks want to learn about natural resources and use those data for planning. But that's typically municipal audiences, landowners, like if you want review of your forest management plan, or you want to have our private lands biologist do a walk on your property and help come up with strategies to manage for more deer or certain birds, things like that, and also work with land trusts on their strategic planning for identifying priority areas on the landscape. One of our, if you've heard about our program at all, you've probably heard or seen about our kind of core maps, and I'll talk about these a little bit more with Winthrop examples. We very creatively call them Map 1, 2, and 3. But it's essentially a collection of water-related resources, plant and animal habitat-related resources, and conservation planning resources. We also have those in print form. So I mostly have sort of screenshots and things to talk about in the presentation, but we make paper maps available whenever you want a copy. So about once a year, we recommend getting a new copy, and you can also download them as PDFs online. So we'll dig in a little bit more to that sort of mid-level view of what these maps are and what's on the ground in Winthrop. Map 1 includes features, again, this is sort of the water resources collection of data, so it includes great ponds, wetlands, streams, what we call shoreland areas. So again, these maps being for planning purposes and being non-regulatory, what that's depicting is a 75-foot buffer on minor streams and a 250-foot buffer on great ponds, major flowing waters, and wetlands over 10 acres. And this map also depicts road stream crossings. So these are all been surveyed in the field across the state with all the measurements collected to know whether a culvert is currently not restricting water flow, or whether it's currently either damaged or perched or undersized and presenting a barrier to water flow, both to aquatic organisms as well as the problems with the infrastructure where the crossing is sited. So just to zoom in a little bit and give an idea of how that looks on the map, we've got kind of Winthrop Town Center here. Wetlands are depicted with this graphic that looks like plants. Wetlands over 10 acres have that 250-foot buffer. So that's the light blue is showing the riparian buffer or the shoreland area. Streams are depicted in the dark blue line, and so this one's a minor flowing stream. It has the 75-foot shoreland area riparian buffer, great ponds with the buffer. And then this is what the stream crossings look like. So this would be an example of a site with a stream crossing that's not known to present a barrier, so there's no problems at the time of survey with flow at that site. Lost my cursor. And then these symbols here are potential barriers. And then I don't have it on this close-up, but an X would be a known barrier. So that means that there's a perched culvert or an undersized culvert that's got flow problems on one side or the other. And that's a way, well, we'll talk about what you can do with that information on the next slide, I think. So recommended strategies or ways that data on Map 1 can be used are thinking about areas where shoreland zoning doesn't apply and ways to increase protections to improve water quality and flooding resilience. So adding required buffers around smaller wetlands or some of the smaller streams that aren't, don't have that regulatory nexus. Can also inventory and address aquatic barriers using the stream barrier data to think about where priority areas would be to fix that infrastructure, improve flooding problems as well as habitat quality. Some of the measures that we recommend, so they sort of range from policies and ordinances to voluntary and education outreach measures, so things like just having these maps available at town and letting landowners know that they can look at the mapped resources on their properties. And then in a couple places in the presentation, I just highlighted strategies from the 2024 Comp Plan that relate to these resources and the planning board. So there was a strategy on page 248 that the planning board include as part of their review process, consideration of pertinent Beginning with Habitat maps and information about critical natural resources. So those are the kind of things that we're discussing tonight. Next map that we have is Map 2, which depicts high-value plant and animal habitats. So this is going to be in the case of a rare wildlife species or plant species in town as well as significant wildlife habitats, which are things like deer wintering areas, waterfowl and wading bird habitat, significant vernal pools. This map is again for planning purposes, but these significant wildlife habitats, sort of like capital S, capital W, capital H, they do have a regulatory nexus through DEP and certain permitting processes. So zooming in on sort of the same area of Winthrop there, what we're looking at here are deer wintering areas in the brown hash, so we have several of those in town. Inland waterfowl and wading bird habitat, or IWWH, we have several of those in town. And those are, we have these really nice clean lakes. They have a lot of wetlands that surround them that have a lot of fish and frogs and things that birds like to stop over and feed on or build their nest in that area. That's the kind of activity that's going on in those high-quality waterbird wetlands. So just to kind of make it a little more interesting, bring it to life, this is the actual kind of what we're talking about on the ground when you're looking at these mapped resources. So things like significant vernal pools, these are areas that in the spring get really wet. They have no fish. They're not wet year-round, so they're a great place for frogs and salamanders to come lay their eggs in the spring, like the spotted salamander here. They also provide a lot of food for other animals in the food chain. They also filter rainwater and spring melt water into the groundwater system. And then just a depiction of something like an inland waterfowl and wading bird habitat, species like great blue herons, which we do have in town, are making use of those areas again for nesting, feeding, and foraging in those wetlands. Moving on to Map 3, this is our undeveloped blocks and connectors. So it depicts large undeveloped blocks. And what those are, are areas of not necessarily continuous tree cover, but some kind of vegetated cover that's not broken up by any roads. And they're... So on this map, we've kind of subtracted out the impervious area or the roads and developments and calculated the acreage for these contiguous blocks of habitat, as well as connectors and stream crossings. And these undeveloped areas and the terrestrial or road crossings, as well as the aquatic crossings that we talked about earlier, are essential for maintaining species diversity, allowing wildlife to move across the landscape, also essential for maintaining water quality, natural resource industries like timber or important agricultural areas, climate resilience, and much more. I'm going to point out a couple of these features next. So one here, this is illustrating this large undeveloped block. And what can be important about these areas, or I think what's relevant maybe to some conversations that's going on in town, are thinking about as things like subdivision requests are coming in or those ordinances are being revised, where do we want to direct that growth and where do we not want to impact these resources like large areas that are important for all these ecosystem functions? So that's an example of a large undeveloped block. This is an example of a potential road crossing. So what this is showing is an area where on both sides of the road, there's natural vegetated cover coming down to the road. And so, you know, our plants and wildlife don't start or stop at the boundaries of town. These provide areas where those wildlife can move across into different towns or into different areas of town, and that's essential for those species being able to kind of do their seasonal movements, come and go on a yearly basis, and stick around in town. And so those road crossing areas can be important, again, when thinking about subdivision design or ordinances. You want to minimize breaking up those areas and require things like minimizing driveway entrances or between certain developments, keeping a buffer of 500 or 1,000 feet so that you're not breaking that connection between undeveloped habitat blocks and you're allowing those functioning pieces of the landscape to stay connected. Didn't really get this one right on that stream crossing, but this is highlighting, so the same feature, same dataset that was on Map 1 is on Map 3 here, showing important aquatic connectivity points. So here we have those Xs that are known aquatic barriers. This is a problem for things like brook trout that need to come and go to cold water sources or different areas on the landscape during the year, as well as with the knowledge of things like local public works, maybe areas that we know are problems for flooding or road washouts. And so this data layer is a way to help prioritize where the next road projects might be and kind of thinking about addressing more than one problem at once by upsizing or replacing those culverts. I like this illustration that's coming up next. It's just a different way to think about what that means on the landscape when we think about having those large undeveloped blocks. So thinking about blocks that are over 500 acres in size, you can have this whole variety of native wildlife on the landscape. As you have things like roads or subdivisions or different types of development that bisect those blocks and turn them into smaller undeveloped blocks, you have certain wildlife that's either just doesn't have enough for its home range or doesn't want to be around that kind of human activity. So you start to lose some of that diversity on the landscape. And then as you, you know, really chop up those blocks and get into the 1 to 19 acres, you're left with stuff that's still important, but it's just those most common species or species that are more adaptable to being around human development. So as you can think about strategies to prevent that from happening, things like land use planning and zoning, so different types of conservation or clustered subdivision design, also balancing that with discussions about where housing should go and where growth areas in town are. You know, it's like a three-legged stool, I guess, in that sense. So you're also having conversation at the same time about where those special undeveloped areas in town are and figuring out a way to incentivize development in the right places. And again, making these maps available, education outreach to landowners about the unique resources in town and how to maintain those important connections or native vegetation. This map also becomes important for open space planning, but I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a couple slides, so we'll leave that for now. I can dig more into this if anybody's interested, but we, so essentially, I just went through the paper versions of all of our standard maps, which you can also download as a PDF. That's not really interactive. It's just like an overview. All of those data layers are also available on our online map viewer. So this is an example of essentially all the same features that were shown on that Map 1 turned on, how that looks online. And the nice thing about online, you can do a different combination if you want. You can click right on all of these features and it'll pop up and tell you this is an aquifer. Here's either a link to more information about aquifers or a link to the source that the data came from, a link to, in some cases, recommended strategies. I've intentionally not turned on parcels on this, but you can turn parcels on. Because this is planning-level data and would still require something like a site visit for a project that was potentially in a sensitive resource, you can only zoom so close. So you can turn parcels on, and that will help with certain level of investigation, but some stuff is still going to require field truthing. And this is just an example of the Map 2, the resources that would be on the print map. You can also turn on the online map and Map 3. I think I also had a screenshot of that actual. So another couple points I want to make about the online resources. I know there was some level of parcel viewer mapper being put together in town. Not quite all, but most of these data layers are available online from the Maine State Geo Library. So if the town wanted to, and we can also provide data clips, if the town wanted to take some of these data sources and incorporate them into their own viewer. Maine State Geo Library? I think I'm saying that right, but I don't have my notes here. So it's, yeah, it's like an online, you can click and download. That would be for the person that has like ArcGIS, can manipulate all of that and have the software on their computer. You can go on this by using this, yep, and I think Dawn put the link in the materials. I like this a lot. I find it pretty easy to kind of zoom around and turn on what you want to look at and not what you don't want to look at. That's all free, well, everything that our program puts out is free and available to the public, including our presentations and our model ordinances and all that. So the map viewer is free. If you want to download it to use and like process and do more GIS-related stuff, that would be from the Maine State Geo Library. So next, I'm just going to, I know another interest in town is open space planning, so I'm just going to go through a few slides on sort of what that is or isn't and how that aligns with some of the other stuff we've talked about tonight, like where should housing go, downtown revitalization, and implementation of the comprehensive plan. So what is open space? I guess I'll start by saying it's really community-defined and community-driven, like what their definition of open space is, or ours, I'll say, because we're all Winthrop residents, and/or what it isn't. But generally, it's land and water resources with natural and community value. It can be publicly or privately owned, and it can typically include things like scenic areas, recreational trails, agricultural land, and athletics facilities. So that's sort of the inventory, what's on the ground, what do we call it in town? And open space planning is a community-driven process to define an inventory, open spaces in town, and then create somewhat of a roadmap of community priorities and opportunities to maintain, connect, or expand access to open space. So not my nature to put up a slide that frames it all in a negative way, but just to kind of share the what it's not side. It's not regulatory. It's not inherently linked to anything to do with open space tax status or the tax base. It's, it is everything that we have on this slide here. So it's a community-driven process to identify priorities. It's another sort of plan on the shelf for when opportunities arise to do things like think about where to put a connector trail between different existing open space and neighborhoods, or get people to the downtown. It's a way to think about those options ahead of time and pick from those priorities when the time is right or when funding opportunities arise. So this is again another strategy from the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. And this map here, just to give folks an idea of the potential outcome of an open space plan, this is a map from Bridgeton's recent Open Space Plan. And so what this is showing is an inventory of the town-owned open spaces. They've done a process where they identified, so the dark green ones here are sort of well-developed and highly-used, and the lighter green, they've identified as underused. And so part of their planning process, these were already town-owned lands, was figuring out how to better get a mix of uses going on at those properties or a potential trail here in green to connect some of those properties to areas of town that maybe wouldn't be walkable or connected to green space. So that's just one example of some outputs of a potential open space plan. It's not on the map here, but I know another part that they, another aspect of their plan was to kind of look at their town and identify what distance did people have to walk or bike or drive to get to a park or an open space, and think about where could future areas or connections be to make sure that everybody had more safe and accessible ways to get to parks and open space. And that can align with stuff like newly-developing neighborhoods, where stuff is expanding in town, but keeping those scenic or important natural resource areas as green space for those neighborhoods, and a lot of other potential outcomes that we could discuss another time if that project is going forward. So bringing that back to how Beginning with Habitat can help with open space planning, and again, this is sort of like the free starter kit towards that inventory at least. We have the data available for the current conserved lands. Undeveloped blocks can help with identifying priority areas for future trails or parks. And thinking about where those high-value natural resources co-occur or overlap can help to identify the most important areas for where future open space might be appropriate as you have those other conversations about where development would be appropriate. And some of the other types of like community input or data resources that would be added at the community level are things like existing recreational trails or where potential routes for trails could be. I don't think all the municipal parks and fields are in the conserved lands database, so that would be in addition to those open spaces that already show here. If there were agricultural resources that were important to the community, or there was a need to have more of those in the future, that kind of information could be added. And then just other discussions about needs and priorities related to open space planning. Chose this as my closing slide, pretty much. So we've talked about maps and data and ordinances, and to me, this is helpful to kind of take a step back and think about the why of all of those potential tools and why we collect all those data. These are, except for this trophy picture, fish picture, these are all my pictures from Winthrop. And so why we would use these maps to potentially think about policies or ordinances or future roadmaps and plans for the town is to protect things like our scenic views from Mount Pisgah and Berry Pond that we all love, our clean abundant water resources, year-round fishing opportunities, and all this wildlife that we have. I think those are, yeah, literally just all in our backyard. So, and preserving and stewarding those resources for future generations. That's my, that's kind of always my spiel with Beginning with Habitat, but it's a little more personal tonight. Didn't mean to shut that off. There we go. So this is my actual last slide, but that QR code will take you right to our website. And happy to take any questions or pick up a discussion at a later time about any of these topics. Yeah, that's a great question. So I guess maybe I'll repeat it in case people are watching this later, but we map significant vernal pools on our Map 2. And Greg's question was if that, if data is collected in town related to a project that identifies another potentially significant vernal pool, how could that get entered into the dataset? The DEP has forms that most consultants or like wetland biologists would have access to and probably have filled out. There's criteria for how many egg masses and of what species are found in the pool, so the survey has to be done at appropriate time of year. And we're mostly looking for wood frog eggs, spotted salamander eggs of certain thresholds, and fairy shrimp, I believe of any quantity. So the consultant or whomever had done that survey can send in those forms to DEP. And we work with DEP to get, we actually manage the database, but sending that form into DEP would sort of be the official recording of that. So it's a good point because there's likely, we like to always say, there's likely many other significant vernal pools in town. There's only, it only gets recorded when somebody wanted to do something and there was a survey, for the most part. Sometimes land trusts go survey all their properties. So on any rolling basis, we'll take data into that process and map new significant vernal pools. So if there's none there, it doesn't, it might just be because nobody's looked. Once one is recorded, that's sort of treated like a mapped wetland. It's like, until somebody does a lot of legwork to show that nothing is there over the course of more seasons, it's recorded, it's on the map in perpetuity. Yeah, that's another good point. I don't know the exact answer. I think the answer is it should be, but maybe it's not always. So, and we would always love to encourage like a working relationship with the town to figure out ways to more, to cross all those Ts and dot all those Is to make sure that that information gets to where it needs to go. So I can check with DEP, and I can get back to you guys. I expect that there's some sort of bucket I guess I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. We wouldn't, we at our program wouldn't need that local survey data, but for projects that go through other like regulatory branches of the state agencies like DEP or Beginning with Habitat's environmental review, which is where on the planning side for something that is a development of a certain size or intersects with certain natural resources, it will go through our environmental planning team. They might need more of that data, but I can't really answer for them as far as like what they would need, or...
That was something that came to the planning board? Areas, if I'm understanding part of your question. You have a 30-acre block. Generally speaking, you're not done the entire, depends on the size of the project, what the project is in terms of potential. It's going to be a field determination when it comes down to a project.
So the planning place, the planning process wouldn't change anything about ownership, uses, zoning, or anything on the property. It's more like taking stock of what the publicly-owned spaces already are. And then, it could include privately-owned, like a property that has an easement that allows certain types of access, things like that. But it's an inventory of existing spaces that can be used by the public. And then a community process to say like, where would we like to see more trails? Or what do we think are important features? You know, like Pisgah is very well-protected, but maybe there's, you know, one direction from there that might be good for future potential trail connections. So it, the plan itself doesn't change any of those uses on the ground or put anything into rule. It's a document that the town can reference in the future. Say like some of those properties came up for sale, and maybe there's a certain, you know, agreeable use for those that we want to pursue, which could become conservation. Or, I lost my train of thought a little bit there, but did I answer your question? So it wouldn't change what anybody can do on their land. And it also wouldn't necessarily only involve putting something into a conservation easement or conservation acquisition. It can include just conversations about where should we prioritize? Like a bike lane or more sidewalks to let folks get to these areas that are already town parks? So it's, can take a lot of forms and kind of have different strategies. And then it's also up to the town, similar to the comprehensive plan, to sort of pick up and run with those different strategies. But it's more about the ways that the community, the special places in town and the way the community wants to like access those places or connect those places,
Like one of the things that in the planning board's role that you might do is look for opportunities. So even if it's not town, in terms of subdivision, you already know, well, you know, this has been flagged as these reasons and incorporate that potentially into the development. So I think, I think it's just not going to...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be unless in the future there was somebody who said, "I own 100 acres, and I'm downsizing to just where my house is." And like, there was kind of like an openness to having conversation with the town. "Oh, I know that in the plan, this was potentially an important..." That's, it's sort of like conversation starters, plans on the shelf, because another opportunity that comes to mind is this big recreational trails bond in the state. So if the town had a plan that said, you know, "We would really like to build a connector between these couple parcels or something," and then now you have a way to, you have that, you know, 50% plan or that community momentum for that plan, and there's a grant that you can go for, maybe it helps to kind of pull those different pieces together.
So the last town that I worked in, they actually decided to buy open space. And so as opportunities came up, they had prioritized areas that they thought were, for different reasons, had different values. And so they started, opportunities became available. They didn't imprint on any dates, it wasn't regulation, but it was looking for, if we had the chance, this is what we would like to see. And that, I feel, is part of the space that lays out those, looking for those opportunities.
Another application that comes to my mind is, you know, like this town and a lot of other towns I work in are more rural towns. Maybe there's not a lot of development pressure, but when that pressure comes, if you don't have, if you haven't had those discussions about where we think housing makes sense, also for like roads and infrastructure and cost to the town, and where we think it makes sense to keep this undeveloped habitat block, or maybe in the future, we want to build more trails there. If you haven't had those conversations, then it's hard as a planning board or to make decisions that would protect those places or make decisions that kind of foster smart growth, you know, keep directing development to the growth areas. So all those things kind of work together. And we hear that a lot, like towns that didn't think they needed a solar ordinance, which we already have, or towns that didn't think they needed an open space plan. And I'm not trying to make like a doom and gloom type of situation, but you don't know you need it until you need it. And so doing that prep work to kind of have a pipeline or have those discussions means that you're in a better place to respond to changing demands or land uses.
I don't have any questions specific to this. I just, I appreciate the presentation and it, lots of ways. But I really hope that you all supported the recommendation. All of these reasons discussed this night. All of the comprehensive goals and objectives. Everything's interconnected, not all of them. Yeah. So, yeah. The condominium of Lakeside Hotel and 67 Welch's Point did a site walk and you had a presentation. So those are the two applications. Next agenda on the 11th. And there was discussion about having a site walk scheduled maybe for Saturday.
Welch's Point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second one, it's change in use. I suggested Dawn and I wanted your input as well. To me, that looks like a pretty good sized site visit. Very thorough. And I would really like, well, if you can, based on your experience around these things. So we talked about a Saturday visit instead of a, before the meeting visit. One errand can't make it before the meeting. I don't know, guessing maybe an hour. I like some detail, I guess.
As long as we've. That's the big thing. Really talking about doing, you know, the separation between the hotel, where's that? Feel like if we're going to do a true site visit. Ideal, because we could get into a discussion. I still feel like it's important to know, like, what's the distinction? Like, what, this one's going there, this one's going there. And to not have that when we're there or prior to when we're there could really make it.
I prefer before, Michelle.
I do have the information requested, so that would be a complete application. Whether it's accurate or meets the standards, that's not yet been determined. But the, but the items are there. And I think as a group, if you decided you wanted to see certain things flagged in the field, certainly have the applicant be there. We can arrange for that. You will have the information for certain, because I've got it right now in my app.
Is that appropriate? We are thinking, we expect.
For a site visit?
Yeah, I mean.
What do you expect?
Need to get an understanding, which buildings are going to be standalone, which buildings are going to stay together. They talked about modifying the motel, buildings as well. And then explain like which parking goes with what building. And really, I think, me, the biggest confusion was where's the line between the dock property and the motel property?
How they relate.
And how that's going to be related, because you're not separating the lot. So is that a business that sits on top of somebody else's land? And is there a lease agreement for that? How do we, or, you know, because we're not going to allow them to separate those into two separate lots. Because we really can't, because they don't meet our standards. And that would be, you would have to go to the variant, to go to Board of Appeals and get. Sort of lease agreement.
Should look like.
Kind of worked again.
We want to see what that looks like.
Yeah, exactly. Because I think that's, that could be a very, very contentious issue to walk into. That seems like if that's not working, what, all the people that take boats and park in everybody's parking lot, condos, thinking we've just opened ourselves up to a heck.
What's that look like?
So I do have, and I haven't reviewed the most recent documents, but I have them. It does include, the declaration of condominium includes the proposed homeowner association documents. And that, a lot of that, those will be reported, they'll be referenced on the reported plans. So the lot and the association documents, they can achieve a lot, I guess, and towards clarifying that and protecting property owners, protecting the town and the lake. So that would be, that will be very important to examine. I think a lot of what you're looking for will be in those documents. Because during the last submission, they were looking at that as, as a condo unit. So it would have all the same, the same shared space as the units that are being used for seasonal.
I think it's just that, that marina is going to be a separate company. And if the condominium has all of the parking, where are they going to park? You know, if there's 50 boats out there and people rent slips, drive and park and use it on the weekend, they need to have 50 parking spaces. Saw what it looked like during the fisherman tournament just a month ago. And it was every single piece of grass, piece of woods, piece of road was covered with boats. They were on the other side of the road, they were everywhere. Seems like they don't have parking now. What's going to come during midsummer? All of those boats, boats, when they're all full and people want. Who's to say, we don't want to have our police or whatever resources constantly. Condominiums, parking.
Along with Greg said, the, the parking, boat parking currently is across the street. How does that fit into this?
It is a separate lot of record. There is some documentation around discussions in the past where there's, I don't want to say if there's approval. I have to look at that again and part of, as part of putting together the history.
Again, I don't, I don't want to solve it, I just want to understand what their plan is.
That's, that's really what it is, is.
Not come in, that has been separate, so.
I mean, I want to walk that land too. I want to, I want to understand what their plan is and how they're going to deal with the parking overall. For the marina, the condominiums and the bathroom.
Well, and we have to look at that versus our ordinance. And that's really for us to kind of work through. We have to understand and say how, what is our interpretation meets ordinance? If there's different uses, marina is its own business, and we've had that, it's a conditional use. Then we, it's our job to make sure they have parking and they meet our ordinance to do that. Otherwise, we have to say, no, you can't do that. That's at least my thought process. It's just, parking is going to be an issue on the spot.
So that, I understand the parking question, the issue, as far as the site walk goes, because you can't deliberate and make decisions. But fact finding, you want in the field to see, so the spots, these are for these units, this is for this use.
It's a, these spaces are for the marina, these spaces are for the condos, and this is, we get our numbers that we've, that you see in the plan.
And if that.
How does that, contractually, how does that?
Yeah, I mean, how do they make sure that those are?
They don't, they have.
They do, it's part of our, part of our ordinance. And. One for every unit. Extra per unit.
Their responsibility to look at the need.
Yes, yes, they're supposed to do all that. We break these, 20 condos based on our ordinance that says you need 25 spaces. Here's where our 25 spaces are. They don't do that for us, denied. I mean, that's what, that's their responsibility.
So in the field, you want like stakes, survey tape drawn at like certain, certain things at a certain distance?
We've got the plan.
Yep, then you're comfortable with.
Be okay to be like, yeah, look at this.
So the, the, I believe there is a clear plan. And again, saying the information is, is there and saying if it's correct, I haven't looked at that. But it's for the next agenda, so we'll go out in your planning board packet. I could give it to you tonight, I haven't done a, a detailed review of it.
Since that.
Well, I, I've not sent it to you.
She has it, she's reviewing.
Submissions that weren't complete, so they have been working on it, it just hasn't come to you yet. And I, I just want to remind you that subdivision is required to have two meetings. So there will be a preliminary meeting and then a final meeting. So that's by state statute and by your ordinance. So they'll come for the first meeting and then, you know.
Just a.
First was discussion, just sketch, yeah.
Two meetings. So the first meeting would be. The application.
No, it does not count, no. And they only submitted it as, for a sketch discussion, well, turned into a sketch discussion. So yeah, that doesn't count towards the two stage. The butters weren't noticed for that, because it was just a preliminary or a sketch. I have a drawing. What exactly is it? Been one thing, condo is not a condo. What is it? It's an existing motel in Marina with a little cafe. It's entirely non, well, the marina is not non-conforming as far as the use goes. But as far as shoreline zoning goes, those commercial uses are not permitted. So it's, it is legally non-conforming. So if they wanted to rebuild it today, they, they would not be able to build the hotel. However, they do have that, that ability to maintain. So they want to change it to a condominium form of ownership. So they're going to combine some of the units, so I can't remember, I'm going to make this up, 22 units. And they're going to combine it to 11, right? Reduce the number of units, like knocking down walls and there's, there's floor plans. And then those units, they want to convey out individually. So there'll be separate owners, the form of ownership will change, the intent is not the use. People can purchase them, they will not be able to establish it as a primary residence. It would have to be a second seasonal.
So they're going to convert the motel into. Existing parcel, hotel and those. Association, take hotel and. Or shared one. Detached buildings are going to become. Each building will be its own condo and then the motel will be sliced in multiple condos.
Won't be the same business.
Well, assume that.
To hand those out, there's no reason I can't, it's just that I haven't gone through them with a fine tooth. But if you'd like to have them in advance, I'm happy to distribute them. They are. Yep, let me, is now the time?
Might be.
They are, I'm just making sure I understand. So for a site visit, which we have not scheduled that yet, or we believe it'll be on a Saturday. We're talking about where are the standalone buildings, you know, where are they attached units? What parking spaces out in the field are associated with, with which units? How is parking for the business of the marina addressed? Because now there isn't someone who's coming necessarily to the hotel, who's been put in, there could be someone in town, right? Who's coming to put their boat in. So there's that whole parking analysis. If it in fact includes use of the property across the street, how is that tied to it? So as far as fact finding in the field, are those, have I hit the?
During?
Okay, sorry. Thanks. Apologize, I don't recall the supplement I had. If we, so in the table of uses, Marina is listed as a ready use, water dependent use. I don't know what the standards around a Marina are. So if those dot, I don't know if on land, town has regulations and parking associated that, I'll have to check on that.
Two phone occasion, that exceeds. Like we. The link.
We fall in the state, yeah. I don't think they submitted a FOSS first. I, I worked with Bill Monigal on that, seeing, you know, it's catch as catch can, right? It's an existing condition. When you, I'll have to go back through, I don't know that there's FOSS first calculations in there. And I don't know that Bill was.
Original one didn't have any, but the one actually got.
I'm not sure, they didn't, yeah, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak on a turn.
Understanding the condominium concept and the subdivision of the hotel, I'd like to see an example of what they're posing to whoever. I mean, is it, is it two rooms that selling two? It's rooms, right? I mean, hotels.
Mine too, to me.
Yeah.
Not going to do anything with, they're not going to create it, sell it. I want to see what that looks like.
Grab those, because they're required, because those have to be recorded, as people own within the elements of the building. So that gets recorded, similar to when you have a land subdivision. So let me grab that.
Just to add to your list, what I'm talking about is have them show us what they. Just to add to your list, what I'm talking about is have them show us what they.
Space, yeah.
Thank you.
Limited common. It's limited common space, not a non-con. I think some of your questions will be answered when you have a chance to look at like the association documents.
See.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I'll bring out information and that there's not deliberation tonight.
So.
Standard. Because this is not, this is not a common.
Because we do have. We do have, we do have. Two, two. Sure, they're, they're. Bushes and trees where they like boats and stuff. And that means like. Is deemed parking. Impervious. Deemed as a parking space, you have to pave it and put grass or put some material down, which now classifies it as parking, which now. It's. Is two spaces per every dwelling unit. Accessory dwellings don't count. Dwellings multifamily, it says two spaces for every three dwelling unit. Like, does that mean every other dwelling unit doesn't have a car? I thought that was, I said, did we write that backwards? Is it three? Is it supposed to be three spaces for every two dwelling units?
The city that are happening.
Well, I get the city, but in Winter, there's no bus. You're either walking or you're biking.
Or you're arrested.
Yeah. But it just doesn't make sense to be. Two spaces for three units. Well, motels are different. One parking space for each guest room, one parking space for each employee based on the. You need more for a motel than you do for a dwelling unit multifamily, which makes no sense to me. I think that's a mistake that's probably been in there for thirty years. Well, but it says, it's on a motel, it says one for each guest room and then one parking space for each employee based on the average employee occupancy. And in addition, adequate spaces based on the standards applied to the section shall be provided for restaurants, meeting rooms, auditoriums, et cetera, et cetera. Thing we need to nail then. Is. Right. No, no, definitely not, because it's well over the standard, sure.
Seasonal use only. And so what's their plan?
They should, it should be one lot. So I did ask them to merge that into one lot and then they're going to divide up the condominiums from there. Because it was two separate parcels. So it's going to be one large lot. Those are private restrictions, so the board doesn't have any jurisdiction there. It would take someone, a private property owner, to raise that as a civil matter. But they're not meeting the requirements of the deed unless the planning board had placed that previously as a condition of approval. Then in that instance.
I look at it from the standpoint of, not the alcohol one, but the seasonal one. We're looking at use, change in use. Me, that enters into it from a planning standpoint. Says relative to use.
We want to be as clear as possible and it's hard because it's not clear. Perfect sentence, and then we'll look at it and go, oh, how did we? But I think the question you're asking needs to be answered and we need to document it at the registry of deeds.
Just carry over to the.
Initially, yes, there are two parcels of land. Um, yes, the boundary line right between the two, so. That's a separate parcel. They're not asking permission on anything on that. So as a result of further discussion in a sidewalk. If it's, if it becomes evident that they're going to need to king off-site, then that will be another site.
Yeah.
Combined, yeah. So here's the, showing the floor plans of the cabinets. The cabinets, they're calling them cabins. So I guess this is good to hand it out tonight because a lot of, there's a lot of details to read. And I feel like when you're done, I'll have clear direction to give them in terms of sidewalk. So they have a preliminary meeting and final, you could do the sidewalk before the preliminary, before July eleventh, June eleventh. Or you could be, do it in between the two meetings. It seems like it would be more practical to do it before even the first meeting because you've already had.
I think.
There, well, there's the thirty-first this weekend and the seventh. Oh, this Saturday is rain, yeah.
It's coming.
I think. No, this Saturday is the thirty-first. And that's the rain day. The seventh is the following, maybe the Saturday before the meeting. Wait. Right, one?
It's got. It's coming Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
It's in the rain.
It's a rainy Saturday.
Discount.
We did it this. Well, you could do. Say six or seven.
You could push the meeting out later technically too, right? You could do the sidewalk and have the meeting at seven-thirty.
Start the.
Definitely using, you stated, sleeping. What is that?
And.
Because people.
Who ca- no, no, who ca- they don't get to pick a term.
Well, okay, thank you.
That's, that's the way it works. They don't get to pick a term. This is why I'm looking at all these definitions and this is why you don't put definitions in here. Because they don't get to pick a term. We already have definitions. They have to pick the category. Funk house is not in this ordinance. They don't get to use it, period.
River garage.
Think. Toward. Kitchen.
As soon as they switch that over and. It's not a garage anymore because now they've changed use. Well, I mean, if you're going to add plumbing, it, you could, it could be a garage and you could have plumbing in your garage. That's something that you could have, but if you have a living space and plumbing. As far as changing.
Example, the seven-seventy-six, but Welch's Point, they have an outbuilding that they. They, it was all redone, tops and bad. It sounds like it was newly, but it's. It's in that, it's in, what is it? Because they don't have enough land area to have two dwelling units. You can't have an accessory dwelling unit in the shoreline district. Because you can have two units, make the minimum land area for each. So they don't meet either of those requirements, so they. Dwelling unit. And I'm not asking for. This keeps coming. Here. Feel like they've been giving guidance this way, or if it's just, I'm not sure, but there's a lot of these bunk houses out there, and that may be completely community. I just want to make sure it is what it's supposed to be because it's a slippery slope.
Really... To the question, because his interpretation of the rules and what he's going to classify is really... Because if coming for a building, I mean, what is he doing? And if it moves from, okay, this is a dwelling unit, you know, switch to a dwelling unit, what is, what is that thing that checks that box?
Stove.
What is that? Well, but what if somebody, I mean, now you think about it, you know, what if, oh, I've got an easy bake oven, and now I've got a microwave. Now about what, at what level does it classify as a stove? And you, I mean, I could see splitting hairs everywhere. The bottom line is, it's where Mark's making that determination on the ground to say whether it comes to us or not. That's the bottom line, is where is that line? Moves categories, you know, like I said, they can't use bunk house. Is it an accessory dwelling unit? Is it a garage? Is it a shed? What is the definition? We define those, but they can't make up terms that we're not defining.
Here you say is, this really isn't a thing.
No, it's not a...
Shed.
Doesn't exist.
But they shouldn't be having a bunk house that's...
They, they can't call it a bunk. Yes, what was it permitted as? If it's permitted as a...
Ones that have been around forever, that are just, you know, like, who knows how that happened. Legitimately, like, they just stayed in the bunk.
Right, but, you know, somebody comes in and says, well, I want an Astrodome in my side yard. What's the requirements for that? I can put whatever I want in it because I just made it up. Can't do that. It's that, I mean, that's exactly what they're doing. Oh, that term's been around. It doesn't matter if we didn't define it. By defining it, there is rules around it. By not defining it, they can't use it. We have to find the closest definition that does fit, and that's either a dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, garage, shed, or I think there's one other category that we put it under. There's other thing. It'd be a dwelling, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be an accessory, it'd be an accessory dwelling unit, and we have rules and now definitions for that. And if they're like, well, you can't have that because you're in the shorelines, oh, that's... You can't build that there. You can't give that a plumbing. We need to talk to Mark about where that line is because we've defined him, but obviously he's interpreting that or, you know, like Aaron just said, it's like, I, I, I'm in complete agreement with his definition, and I'm not saying that's wrong at all. I think that's a very good definition. The problem being, how does Mark define it?
Well, and is that in keeping with the community?
Well, I think we need Mark to define it. If we're going to need to change the ordinance to align with what the community wants, we first need to understand how the code enforcement officer's interpreting the existing ordinance. Exactly. What, what is, what is that line, and do we need to clearly define it?
So... Is that, okay, because I'm...
I mean, you can have that conversation with him, but I think it's important for us to know where the case is too. And, and it's not, we don't want to grill him, even though it's kind of fun, but it's, it's really more about just understanding where he's drawing that line and what, what falls into these categories. Like, nobody, you can't build a bunk house because that's not in the ordinance. That's not an, that's not an option.
Sixties.
Sleeping. Storage room.
Again, you can share. There's nobody, there's not, you know, we're not going to be the police running out there as somebody drags and hammers. Clearly, finished walls, finished floors, shit where it's all these accessory units.
Didn't get...